Good morning. Welcome to the Board of Supervisors meetings. We have a new change which we hope will be easier for the public. If you go to the beginning of the agenda, it gives you a zoom that you can zoom in on the meetings. You will be muted. If you have something to say when we call for public comment, please raise your blue hand and the clerk to the board will call on you. We're hoping we can get more public comment this way. Thank you. If you're ready, could you please all stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Looks like the threads are a little tight on that flag. I don't know. You had to have taken home Eckham High School to have noticed that. Ms. Glanville, could you please report out from the closed session?
Yes. Report for closed session for September 15th, 2020. Item number one, public employee employment pursuant to government code section 54957B1, environmental management agency administrator. Board action, no reportable action. The board directed staff to bring back a resolution appointing Lisa Medina. Item number two, conference with legal counsel, exposure to litigation, one case pursuant to government code section 54956.9D2, no reportable action taken by the board.
Thank you. I'd like to move to staff comments. If staff has any comments that they would like to make that they think would be of interest to the public, please do so now.
Good morning, Madam Chair and honorable members of the board. Lisa Medina, Environmental Management Agency. This past Saturday, we had another successful free rabies clinic that took place at the Spence Feed and Supply in Angels Camp. We vaccinated over 140 of our community's pets. We would like to give special thanks to Dr. Ginny Rengat, our friends of Calaveras Animal Services Focus, and volunteers, Spence Feed and Supply, and also our animal service coworkers. We would not have been successful without this collaborative effort to bring this free service to our community members. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Medina. Are there any other staff comments?
Not that I'm aware of.
Not hearing any staff comments, we'll move to regular agenda item one, public health, a presentation from staff on COVID-19. Gee, we haven't had one since last week. Dr. Kaleda, Ms. Stranger, are you with us?
Yeah, this is Dr. Kaleda. I'm here. I can get started.
Thank you.
So I'm Dr. Kaleda. I'm the local health officer for Calaveras County. As most of you have heard, nationally, the United States is currently right at 200,000 coronavirus deaths, which is a milestone. This is higher than the predictions I'd originally envisioned for our nation regarding total deaths when this pandemic began back in March. Statewide, California has reported 781,694 confirmed COVID-19 cases with 15,018 fatalities. Calaveras Public Health confirms 311 coronavirus cases within Calaveras with an increase now to 14 official deaths. These figures are now in line with the predictions I provided to this board back in March of this year that at the time were met with skepticism and derision. Our county is currently averaging a daily rate of three cases per 100,000 population. Political disease activity has been showing some signs of slowing in the past two weeks. We're performing 170 tests per 100,000 residents every day with the positivity rate down to 1.9%. Testing volumes at the OptumServe site have decreased to the point that discussions are taking place to potentially relocate the site outside of Calaveras. Preliminary information is that the testing site will move to Tuolumne County on November 1st. Ms. Stranger has a little bit more specific information regarding this issue, I think. Public Health continues to monitor and assist in managing an outbreak of coronavirus cases and significant fatalities in Avalon-San Andreas skilled nursing home. Nursing homes across America have become a tragic focal point for the coronavirus outbreak. The outbreak of the COVID-19 infections continues to develop at Avalon-San Andreas convalescent home after the initial identification of an asymptomatic staff member working at the facility was picked up on routine surveillance testing on July 22nd. To date, infections in 58 residents and 27 staff members have been confirmed through enhanced testing of all residents and care staff. This represents the most significant challenge to our community posed by the pandemic to date. The mortality rate among nursing home residents has been significant in other similar settings throughout the county, and our nursing home is no exception. Residents testing positive at the Avalon site have been temporarily placed in a dedicated COVID-19 unit for isolation within the facility until recovered so as to prevent ongoing transmission to other residents. As of yesterday, the last seven patients were graduated from the COVID-19 unit and deemed recovered and able to move back to the regular rooms in the building. The facility's infection prevention staff have continued to work closely with our public health department and in consultation with the California Department of Public Health. CDPH has dispatched a rapid response team to pay a site visit to the facility and provide infection prevention guidance and technical assistance. The facility is undergoing close surveillance for the prompt identification of any new cases in residents and staff, and scaled up infection prevention activities will continue. Last week's round of testing of the residents revealed no new cases, and an additional round of testing was completed yesterday, the results of which are still pending. If the facility tests negative for two straight weeks, the outbreak can be considered over and contained. Effective last Tuesday, Avalon acquired the ability to now perform rapid point-of-care COVID-19 testing for residents and staff within their facility to reduce the turnaround time for test results and improve the efficiency of the disease control response. The facility and public health are in regular communication also with Mark Twain Medical Center regarding the situation and the potential need for additional space for hospital admissions if residents get sicker. As of today, our official death count for Calaveras stands at 14 deaths related to the COVID-19 pandemic. Public Health will release updated statistics as they become available. There is currently one Calaveras County resident hospitalized. Local hospital capacity remains adequate, and ventilator availability is at 100%. Mark Twain Medical Center has sufficient regular patient care beds, intensive care unit space, and a robust supply of PPE used to protect the healthcare workers at the hospital and outpatient clinics. Governor Gavin Newsom unveiled at the end of last month that the blueprint for a safer economy would replace the county data monitoring list system for determining what businesses can or can't be open in California, including Calaveras County. Every county in California was assigned to a tier based on their rate of new cases. Data is reviewed weekly, and the tiers are updated on Tuesdays. To move forward, which means to get lower on the tiers, a county must meet the next tier's criteria for two consecutive weeks. If the county's metrics worsen for two consecutive weeks, it'll be assigned a more restrictive tier. So as many of you have heard, the tiers are purple. That's the highest widespread, substantial red, moderate orange, and minimal yellow. As of today, September 22nd, Calaveras County remains in the substantial or red tier and will remain at this tier based on our rates of disease for the time being. If Calaveras continues to meet disease thresholds for the less restrictive tier, will be reassigned to the orange tier on Tuesday, September 29th. This means that for the time being, some nonessential indoor business operations are now allowed to be open and some need to remain closed. Under this framework, many recently reopened or many recently closed businesses can resume activity with modifications. For example, din and restaurant services may resume some indoor service at 25% maximum capacity. Movie theaters can open at 25% capacity, hair salons, barber shops, personal services, tattoo, massage, cosmetology, all of those services can reopen with modifications. Gyms and fitness centers can resume indoor operations with capacity limited to 10%. So there's a whole list. So if people want to know what's open in my county, they can visit the covid19.ca.gov website and click on "What's Open in My County" for Calaveras, and you get more specific business information. The best ways to avoid exposure to the virus are to stay at home if you're sick, stay at least six feet away from others outside your household, wash hands with soap and water, avoid touching eyes, nose, and mouth with unwashed hands, and wear a face covering over the nose and mouth when outdoors or even indoors around others. No cost testing for COVID-19 remains available to anyone who'd like to get tested at the OptumServe COVID-19 test site located at the Calaveras County paragrounds, Tuesday through Saturday, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Testing is available for those down to three years of age. People are encouraged to register online ahead of time, but walk-ins will also be accepted. People can call the 888 toll-free number to get a time to get tested. That's available on our website as well. We continue to learn more about COVID-19 every day. This new information will help us guide our public health response. For example, indoor dining remains open with modifications, as I said above, but to protect Californians against this deadly virus, we'll really need to continue to closely monitor how these safeguards are working. It's a dynamic situation, and that's why we've chosen a low and stringent approach to determining when and what business activities are allowed to be open. So I urge Calaveras residents to continue to limit nonessential indoor gatherings whenever possible to reduce the risk of COVID-19 transmission. I know it's been and continues to be a difficult time for us all, and I want to reemphasize to our community, especially in areas where wildfire smoke has impacted our air quality, to stay at home, remain connected, but maintain physical distance. It's likely that the flu viruses and coronavirus will be spreading simultaneously this fall and winter. That double whammy of influenza and COVID-19 poses a significant risk for those at high risk for complications in our community. Our local healthcare system again can be easily overwhelmed treating both patients for flu and COVID-19. So getting a flu vaccine this season is more important than ever. So to continue in a positive direction, we need to do those things that I talked about as a community, avoiding groups, staying six feet apart, getting tested, wearing face coverings, staying home if you're sick, avoid gatherings. There's no doubt that our current situation will be strengthened when we work together to help in the fight against COVID-19. Ms. Stranger's available for some further information as well.
Thank you, Dr. Kaleda.
Thank you, Dr. Kaleda. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Kristin Stranger, Health and Human Services Agency. I just wanted to follow up on just two additional items that Dr. Kaleda was speaking about previously. One is to give a little bit more insight into the potential move of the OptumServe site. As you know, the Optum Serve testing site is a state-administered site. They work directly through a state contract through the California Department of Public Health. And the original purpose of the site was to primarily serve Tuolumne and Calaveras County residents. We have had the site here in Calaveras County for the bulk of the time, but Tuolumne County did approach the state about wanting about the potential to relocate the site due to more use from Tuolumne County residents. There were some community questions yesterday about an item that was on the Sonora City Council agenda about a potential lease for a new location in Tuolumne County. Ultimately, that item did not materialize, and the location did not materialize. And so Tuolumne County will continue to revisit these conversations with the Optum Serve management and administration about a potential move. And as Dr. Kaleda mentioned, that potential move is more likely to happen in November. But again, none of that is solidified at this current time. I also wanted to commend the community on doing such a fantastic job again of continuing with those mitigation efforts. Our data is moving in a positive direction. That's something to be celebrated, and I want to encourage everybody along with on behalf of the public health team to continue to engage in those mitigation efforts. We're trending in a positive direction. We'd like to continue that positive movement. So with that, myself or Dr. Kaleda can take any questions.
Okay. Thank you. I do encourage the board also to get tested. Saturday, I got tested. Again, it is less invasive than it was the first time I got tested, and they can accept walk-in traffic. So I do encourage all of you, even if you feel healthy, to get tested. You're going to help the county with their positivity rate. Was that a good sales pitch, Ms. Stranger? Are there any questions or comments from the board to Dr. Kaleda or Ms. Stranger? Mr. Guaramendi?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. And thank you, Kristin, and thank you, Dr. Kaleda, for your presentation. With the move, and this goes back to Marita's point, you know, one of the metrics is how many tests we administer. That's what the state goes into the formula that determines what color code we're in. I assume that's still the case, correct? They want us, they're encouraging us to get as many tests as possible, and that's one of the metrics, Kristin?
The new system is a little bit simplified. The main metrics that are used are the rate of new cases per 100,000 population as well as the testing positivity rate. And the more testing that we do, the lower we're going to get that positivity rate. We want that to be as low as possible. Right now, we're about 1.9%. We'd like that to be around less than 3%. It's a good benchmark. So we do want more than 150 per 100,000 tests to be performed daily in Calaveras County, and we're about 170, 175 tests a day. So we do look at the number of tests, although the main metrics for ranking us in the tiers remains our case rate and our percent of positivity rate.
Okay. That's, yes.
Supervisor Guaramendi, you're referencing data metrics that also included things such as hospitalization rates and such. That was from the county monitoring system. Since we've moved to the tier system, as Dr. Kaleda said, the metrics of which were evaluated on have lessened.
Thank you very much. That answers my question.
Mr. Mills?
Yes. Thank you for your presentation this morning. I'm questioning, we're seeing now a number of people that are being tested repeatedly over and over again. Do we keep any separate tabs on new testing versus repeat testing?
No, we're looking at testing in totality, and in that number of tests, there may be retests included in that group as well.
Okay. Everybody knows that the businesses in Calaveras County did a great job of trying to figure out how to make this work for them and survive, but as we all know, the weather's going to be changing here very soon, and so the option for outdoor dining or outdoor business activity is going to start limiting as we get into the fall and winter months. Is there going to be any way that we can figure out how to help get them all indoors or get them out of the weather?
Supervisor Mills, I think that speaks a little bit more towards the tier process, right? And so I think we're actually headed towards that direction. Right now, under the moderate, excuse me, under the substantial rate, there is the ability for indoor operations to occur with modifications at a certain occupancy rate. Those percentages increase as we move to least restrictive tiers. So again, if the community continues to engage in the mitigation efforts, we've been fairly successful, actually very successful thus far, we can continue to hopefully move towards the orange tier or moderate tier, which does allow for additional indoor abilities. And as you continue to progress to least restrictive tiers, you see the capacity also continue to increase in soup.
Kristin, are the restaurants aware of the tiers and how many people they can have in their specific operation under each tier?
So that information is available on the website. We put it in press releases. We informed our, we work with Environmental Management, who has obviously a deep connection with the local restaurants, and you can, the website actually has significantly been simplified over the past few months when we moved to the blueprint for a safer economy method of evaluation. And if you go on that, you can pull down, it's a pretty simple tab. It just says restaurants, and then it gives the percentages. So in short, I think that yes, that information is out there. Yes, we've been communicating it. We've done a number of webinars, and we utilize partnerships to continue to share that information out.
It's kind of sad what happened at Avalon, but at the same time, hopefully that's a spike that's over with, and we can now start to stabilize our numbers a little bit. Thank you for the work that you're doing, both of you.
Any other questions? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Stopper.
No worries. Thank you, Madam Chair. 1.9% positivity rate, that's gone in a very positive direction in the last few weeks. The discussion of Optum Serve and the lease possibly going to Tuolumne County, Sonora, you brought up the fact that less than 20 people per day from Calaveras are going to Optum Serve to get their tests, but at the same time, we're showing in the vicinity of 170 to 175 tests a day being performed for Calaveras County. Where are people going to get these tests done?
That number of 170 tests per day is per 100,000 population. So if you assume Calaveras County has a population, let's just round it off to 50,000, half of that, then we'd be looking at, you know, half that number of tests per day for our community. And that's not the only place that people in Calaveras are getting tested. People are getting tested in other testing venues, hospitals, emergency rooms. More providers' offices are doing testing. More rapid testing is available. So there are other options for testing as well as the Optum Serve site.
Okay. Yeah, it was brought up, and I just, you know, the possibility, so if we stay at this rate right now, that we, we've already been through one week of possible maneuvering into the orange level. So we need one more week of these consecutive numbers to either stabilize or even get better, which would mean less, less positive cases, and then we could possibly be moving in that direction by September 29th?
Supervisor Stopper, yes, that is correct. If the disease, if the data holds as it is, or as you can said, continues to improve, there's the potential for the movement into a less restrictive tier or the orange tier of September 29th.
The last thing, you know, it's a horrible thing that's happened at Avalon. I mean, every one of our hearts go out to it. I still question the science behind residents and application of where those people technically live on positivity rates as opposed to everything else where if someone's working outside the county someplace else and they test positive, they're going to be applied to Calaveras County. I just, in the future, I would like to hear the science behind why it's two different ways when it comes to one of these nursing homes.
Well, I'm not sure what you mean, Supervisor Stopper, about it being two different ways. There are definitions and criteria that are applied to each death to determine whether or not it's a Calaveras case versus, you know, another jurisdiction's case. Our health department goes through a very formal review of each death before we formally announce our death counts. So, you know, we go through a pretty detailed process, and we've actually been criticized for being too slow when it comes to announcing the deaths because sometimes deaths in our community get announced in other ways, and people say, "Health department, what are you trying to hide? Why aren't you announcing those deaths formally?" And the reason is, it's because we take a serious review of each one of those cases and apply the criteria to determine whether or not that's a Calaveras death or not.
And I appreciate that. I believe you're doing a great job in, you know, confirming whether it's COVID-19 or not and moving forward. I mean, there's, there's a strict process that you need to follow, and I trust that you're following that process, Dr. Kaleda. What I'm saying is, the two different ways and applications of it is that if you're doing any other business and your residence is in Calaveras County, that death or positive rate is applied to the county that you reside in, except for when you live in a nursing home or staying in a nursing home, even if it's temporarily, you're, and you, let's say, have a residence in Sacramento, then that's still applied to Calaveras County. That's what I'm talking about, and the two different applications are, you know. And I do trust that you're doing your due diligence and duty when applying those and everything, and I don't believe that I'm pointing the finger at you. I think it's more the how the state's applying those numbers, and I don't necessarily agree with it or see the science behind it.
So let me ask for a clarification. If a resident at Avalon dies, but their home, and they're temporarily in their home, Sacramento, is that death attributed to Calaveras number or to Sacramento?
It would depend on whether or not the individual acquired the infection at the nursing home. If a person lives in Sacramento County, they had a hip replacement surgery, they went to stay at the nursing home in San Andreas for four weeks to get therapy and rehab, and then they picked up coronavirus infection in the nursing home, then that gets credited to the jurisdiction. I get credited is probably the wrong word. That case would get designated as a Calaveras County case because that's where it was acquired.
Got it. Thank you. Are there any questions or more comments from the board? Mr. Mills?
Well, Dr., then that leads to the question regarding the first cases that were recorded in Copperopolis, where the individual that acquired it, actually acquired it in another county. They were working in Contra Costa County, and because they lived in Copperopolis, we got the number.
They weren't residents of a skilled nursing facility?
Well, that's, that's kind of what we were talking about and what we're trying to understand. So I'm just, I think that I agree that there needs to be an equal standing in terms of how this is being reported, and nursing homes shouldn't be somehow specialized or separated differently from the rest of the reporting process. That's just a point I'm trying to make.
Thank you. If there's no further comments from the board, I'd like to open this to public comment. Ms. McRide?
Good morning. Terry McBride, New California State, Calaveras County Committee Chair and Senator. I think part of the problem is what the government is telling him to do. That's why it makes no sense whatsoever. But I want to put a little common sense on this, and truly sorry for those that lost their life. That happens during the flu season also. But when I looked at the numbers last night, and I based it on a population of 45,500 because that's what I found on the internet, we're looking at less than 1%, and that includes the deaths. With the deaths, it's .00032. That's a lower population than the doctor mentioned. We shut our county down. We put people out of business. Now you're saying the restaurants can open at 25%. How much profit do restaurants make? I don't think they make that much. How in the hell are they going to do it? And you're asking other companies that, I mean, you guys get paid. He gets paid. What about these folks that aren't? And they're working on such a slim profit, and they should go down on bended knee and thank our governor for, who has no green in that map. And I don't think he's going to put it there. You guys need to realize that. So you're saying that these companies that barely survive are supposed to survive on less and be grateful to the mighty state of California and its tyrannical governor for allowing them to do so? That's what you're saying. I want to go back to where I keep commenting about violating your oath. When you put upon the State Department, say you're just following their agenda, because I don't know what else you'd call it, but following their directive, that's violating your oath if you shut down businesses because within our constitution, you're allowed to have a career. That would include our tax assessor, who I understand sent letters threatening to take away people's business license. Our Board of Supervisors have power. You can stand up and push back and tell the governor, "You represent the community of Calaveras." And you're damn tired of seeing people go out of business and struggling and suffering and wondering how they're going to make it. You have that power. These are percentages. People are living in fear because of these. People are living in fear because of these low numbers. What's going to happen with the twin-demic, the flu, which we have lived through many times? And good, healthy people unfortunately have passed from the flu for whatever reason. I'm not a doctor. I don't pretend to be. But they do. And so now they're going to throw more fear on people. And when I look at people wearing masks, I haven't put one on yet, they will look at me with hatred. That's their choice. Or they look at me like, "Wow, I wish I could do what you're doing. I wish I would." Because I make the choice for my body. I don't want breathing out of a Petri dish, which is what I think a mask is. Nice, warm air and all that. And I have a couple of biologist friends and their teachers, so they actually know biology, that are telling me, "Think of a Petri dish every time you wear that mask, inside and out daily, especially in 100-degree heat." Thank you.
Are there any other public comments?
I'm going to share the screen.
Yeah.
Just a reminder, if you'd like to make a public comment, please raise the green hand in the middle of your screen and we'll call on you.
Okay, thank you. I thank you, Dr. Kleda. Thank you, Ms. Stranger. We appreciate it. I'd like to move to item two, a presentation from Mia O'Connell of O'Connell and Dempsey regarding our federal advocacy and provide guidance on the county's priorities for the 2021 legislative year. Mr. Al, did you want to take the lead on this, please?
Yes, Madam Chair. As you've introduced Ms. O'Connell, we'll present the legislative priorities and inspire discussion upon the board members for priorities for the coming year. And with that, I'll turn it over.
Thank you.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. This is Mia O'Connell. I don't know if you've seen the screen yet or what you're seeing right now.
No, we don't.
Okay, you don't see the...
We do have a paper copy and an e-copy of the document that you sent for the agenda.
Okay. I've got it up on my screen. It was supposed to be up on the screen there. That's not happening?
Nope.
Okay. Let me try this again.
Ms. O'Connell, would you like us to take a quick break or are you...
That would be great.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll figure this out. Thank you so much.
We're going to take a three-minute technical break.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will come back to item two. We're going to move to item three, the appointment of Lisa Medina to the Environmental Management Agency Administrator and Air Pollution Control Position. Ms. Medina, is she on the line?
Yes. Hello, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. We, did you want to talk to us before we take the vote or after we take the vote?
Maybe after you take the vote.
Okay, we'll do that. Does the board have any questions or comments on this action item? Does the public have any questions or comments on this action item? I'll entertain a motion, please.
Madam Chair, I will move this item.
Motion by Supervisor Tuffinelli and a second by Supervisor Mills. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes on a 5-0 vote of the board. Ms. Medina, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, if there's some comments that you would like to make?
Just real quickly. Thank you, Madam Chair and honorable members of the board. I'm honored to accept this appointment and would like to thank the board for selecting me. I share this honor with my coworkers, with whom I work side by side daily, and our colleagues and our partners, and of course, my family who continue to support me. I would not be here without them. This has been a long journey. I look forward to working with our EMA teams, our colleagues, and our partners, and our Board of Supervisors and to continue to provide services to our community. Thank you again. I'm very honored.
Thank you. We're very honored to have you in the position. She's, okay, fine. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Medina.
Thank you again.
I'd like to move back to item number two. Ms. O'Connell?
Yes. Hi, how are you?
Hello. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. It's wonderful to be here. Let me move on and see if we can be successful with getting the PowerPoint up so I can walk you through that a little bit and we can have some discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Let me move on to that. Thank you so much. Okay. Are you seeing the PowerPoint?
Yes, we are. Thank you.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you again for your patience on that. I really appreciate it. It is my pleasure to be here today with you virtually. My name again is Mia O'Connell. I'm with O'Connell and Dempsey. And it's my honor to be here representing you in Washington, DC. And I want to thank the board for their support of our efforts together. I really appreciate that. For today, I want to talk a little bit on where we've been with regard to our 2020 legislative program, the outcomes, and some potential new priority areas, if I may.
Please.
Thank you. So let's start with the priorities. You'll recall last year, as a result of discussions and direction from the board, the board identified six different legislative and administrative priorities. Let me walk you through those one more time. The first one was the removal of hazardous trees on BLM land. Then, of course, we focused on federal funds for healthy watersheds, looking at additional funds for the U.S. Forest Service, in particular Stanislaus National Forest. Our third priority was federal funds for State Route 4 realignment. Our fourth priority was support maintenance of Cosgrove Creek, but really to focus on federal funds for a flood protection project there at Cosgrove. The fifth priority was really working to close out the FEMA grants and working to expedite the county project approvals through the FEMA process for the Butte fires. And then the final item was seeking federal funds for homelessness, including funds for low income and affordable housing and for those in workforce development programs as well. Let's move on to the outcomes, taking each one point by point, if I may. Priority one, the removal of hazardous trees on BLM land. There was some great partnering going on between the county and your staff and leadership and the efforts that we were doing out here with BLM headquarters with regard to our tree mortality program. And the result of those discussions and efforts together, both in California and here in Washington, was the county being able to receive $88,000 from BLM for support of the county's tree mortality program. I think our teaming is working pretty well and we want to continue that. Also, on this issue, we did spend a fair amount of time identifying a multi-year effort to really get into a program with BLM for a couple of years to put our services out there and to get paid for such work for best practices. So what we looked at was a multi-year good neighbor agreement with BLM. And we put together a package for staff, including sample agreement and detailed next steps about how you engage with BLM. And we also talked to BLM headquarters to kind of lay the groundwork that in fact we were looking at this. So we've got kind of two options that we're looking at for a multi-year agreement. One would be a good neighbor approach. The other one is a master stewardship agreement. And we're putting together materials on that. And we'll be working closely with the county to figure out, the county staff to figure out the best fit for us and the best approach. Looking at priority number two, federal funds for healthy watersheds and focusing on forest service funds. It's been an interesting year in Congress, as you well know, for all the reasons that we know. But as a result of that, we haven't, Congress hasn't finished up their appropriations bills for fiscal year '21. The House, in fact, did take steps and move forward and approved their 12 individual appropriations bill. And through our efforts with our delegation and committee staff, the funding in the Interior and Environment Appropriations Bill provides $3.13 billion for the Forest Service, which is an increase of $134 million above the enacted level. So we'd like to spend time as we go forward with the delegation, working to increase that. This is just the House figure right now. Congress has got its hands full with a few items, trying to figure out how they're going to work through it. But the first item actually of today is a continuing resolution to keep the federal government funded through December 11th so they can have the time to work out these individual bills. But thus far, it looks pretty good in terms of forest service funds. The next priority that we've spent some time on is federal funds for State Route 4 realignment. The beginning of the year, last February, we actually identified DOT's Build Program, which came out with a very large billion-dollar discretionary grant program that we spent some time analyzing and working with, the county staff and our Director of Public Works to really look at the fit. And this year was intended to focus priority attention on rural projects. So we had decided that that was a good fit for us and we would aim for that. So what we did was, as the county put together the application and worked with their consultant on that, we worked on the support side of it, working with our elected officials in Washington, Congressman LaClintock and our senators, to get letters of support and put those things together for them, and then work closely with them to follow up in phone calls with DOT headquarters. And I know that Supervisor Callaway was also very engaged in outreach to stakeholders to support our efforts. And we engaged in those efforts pretty aggressively. What happened was DOT did come out, actually early last week with their final decisions. Unfortunately, we weren't selected for a grant. There were two grants in California, even though, that were selected, even though this is supposed to be focused on rural programs this year. Both of those programs were large urban projects, which is a little bit frustrating, but I guess they balanced out the rural part and rested the country with those selections. But those were large urban projects that were selected, some Caltrans highest priorities. In fact, they selected the highest priority for Caltrans. So we are going back and we're actually working with our representatives in Washington. I've talked to the two senators' offices and Congressman LaClintock's office to kind of say, "Okay, you know, that didn't work. Thank you for your help, but let's look at our next round of funding. Let's find something that is suitable to a small rural area like ourselves." So I know that Mr. Pack is already engaged in seeking out state funds for rural projects. And our elected officials in Washington have also committed to me that they'll work with us to identify other federal funds focused on smaller rural projects. So that's where we're at with that. And we're moving forward to the next opportunities. Priority number four focuses on Cosgrove Creek and funding for that effort. We've spent a fair amount of time with FEMA this year as they've put together a new program, which is building resilient infrastructure in communities, which is really focused on pre-disaster public infrastructure projects. It's a good fit for us. And so we've been spending some time trying to figure out next steps with FEMA. And in fact, they came out with their notice of funding opportunity for the hazard mitigation grants in late August. And we did an analysis of that and shared that with our county folks to look at it, to see if it's going to be a good fit. And what we've identified is that under the national competition cap, which is a facet of the program, a grantee could, an applicant could submit an application for up to $50 million for a pre-disaster project that would be cost shared at 75% federal and 25% non-federal, which is a very nice mix. So we're spending some time right now analyzing that. The application will formally open up later in September. And I think the applications are due, will be due in January. So we're going to be working with the county to look at, trying to put together the best possible application. And actually, I want to spend some time looking at what we proposed with the Corps of Engineers because there are going to be some similarities there. But in the case of the Corps, we didn't meet their benefit-cost ratio analysis. I think what we'll probably want to do is size the project down a little bit and focus on the priorities that they've identified, which is a more natural solution, which is looking to provide public benefit for the community. So we're focusing in on that opportunity and see that as a potential for Cosgrove. Turning now to the fifth priority, which was really closing out the FEMA grants and working to expedite county project approvals. We've spent some good quality time with Cal OES under the direction of the county staff and spent time with them, talking about our last two remaining projects from the Butte fire. And we've actually had some good success over the last couple of months with Cal OES and having them work to push FEMA. And in fact, in early July, we did get notice that as a result of our efforts with Cal OES, they did get approval from FEMA to go ahead and allow us to proceed forward on the PW-78 project, which really allows the county to move forward with the remaining $2 million worth of tree removal and to submit that for reimbursement. So that, we're very happy with that. We've got the formal letter directly from Cal OES on July 29th. And so that's proceeding. We have one more project that we're working on as a result of the Butte fire with Cal OES right now. And that's the PW-88 alternative project. And in fact, I was in touch with Cal OES last week and we're pushing hard to get FEMA approvals on that. So that'll be the last piece that we need approvals for. Turning now to the sixth priority, which is the federal funds for homelessness, low-income affordable housing, and workforce development housing in April, right after the pandemic started up. The consultant, our team, put together research. I mean, what happened is that Congress passed the CARES Act and President signed that into law at the end of March, March 27. So we jumped into it to research the opportunities and the funding available for homelessness. And we put together a package of information and sent that on to the county, identifying the federal funding that we saw available for homelessness, which was really focused on the emergency solution grants as well as the CDBG grants for homelessness and coordinated with county staff on that to make sure everybody knew what was available and how that was proceeding. And what we did was work directly... And what we did was, was work directly and found out that actually the county was working well with the different county administrations to start getting the funding and having it come available. So that, that process was underway, and we are like an eagle watching for every bit of federal funds that are coming, that are coming our way. We also identified some FEMA public assistance funding that was available and detailed that early on for emergency operation costs and public facility costs and, and medical sheltering to make sure that county staff knew what was available and, and, you know, offered to provide assistance so that we could pursue these and bring in additional funding to the county. Moving on, talking about additional assistance, while those were the six priorities, we also did spend, of course, some important time in, in looking at, okay, what, you know, we've got the COVID situation, what is available? You know, we couldn't have foreseen this event, but we wanted to make sure that we took the steps that we needed to identify the state and local funding for the county coming out of the CARES Act, and we were pretty diligent on those efforts. So what, what we saw was that in the CARES Act that was signed into law, even though the county itself did not qualify for direct funding from Treasury under the coronavirus relief fund, the state did, and the state qualified for quite a bit of funding. And so what we did was identify those funds and made a recommendation at that time that the county should be working to apply for funds and connect with the state to receive part of the state's allocation from the relief fund for its costs and, and move in that direction. As a result of that kind of communication and teaming, that, that the county in fact was very successful in receiving an allocation of 4,591,000 and to address its COVID-19 needs. And we continue to be diligent in identifying what else is available. And I want to, I want to take a minute now to kind of look at our continuing efforts and to see kind of what's the outgrowth of, of this year's activities and, and how do we continue on with them and what else is available for us in terms of federal funding? So in the transportation arena, we do expect to see federal funding opportunities coming our way through the Highway Safety Program and also through the Surface Transportation Block Grant Program. So, so, you know, that is something that we're focused on. Also, very interesting in the fiscal year 2021 appropriation bills. As I mentioned, the House had passed theirs, the Senate has not acted on theirs. But in the House bill, there is 95 billion in additional funds beyond the base DOT funding and flood control funding that are dedicated to stimulus activity for more or less shovel-ready projects. I don't think that Congress is going to come to terms until probably after the election with its fiscal year 2021 funding, but, but be advised that there is very significant stimulus funds in the transportation bills, flood control, and other funding mechanisms that we have our eye on, that we'll be focused on. Those, instead of like a separate stimulus bill, at this point at least, they folded it into the base package. So we'll be, we'll be working that as, as Congress continues on. Also, on the CARES Act, what we did was put together, as we, as we saw how the CARES Act was functioning, we put together some draft language for the county, which would really go to expand the definition of local government under the CARES Act to allow rural counties with a population that exceeds 43,000 to become eligible for funds directly from Treasury rather than having to have a pass through and wait for funding through the state. So that language, we sent forward to our congressional delegation, and our senators and Congressman McClintock took that and are working with it. As you know, COVID relief package has gone through lots of twists and turns. We've got another round that will be coming, but Congress has not come together on the amounts and what's going to be funded. What I can tell you, though, is that through discussions with our delegation, all of our members are very focused on the need for additional state and local funding, especially for those smaller communities. So we've got, we've got some fighters in Washington on our side. We've got a lot of significant issue on, issues on Congress's plate, but this, this issue is, is out there and front and center, and we're, we're working for additional funds for the county. In addition to just kind of working through that legislation, we're looking through any and all opportunities out of the CARES Act or any other piece of legislation that Congress may move on in terms of funding so that Calaveras County can get its fair share of those funds. We see that as something that's going to continue on. We touched on earlier the BLM multi-year agreement. Again, we're analyzing, working with county staff on, on the two main approaches that we see that, that are the best fit so that we can get a multi-year program going, either through the Good Neighbor Agreement, which is really service for funding and payment, or on the Master Stewardship Agreement, which is much more kind of services for goods for the county. So there's different criteria under both of those approaches. We're working locally with county staff to figure out, okay, what's the best fit for us so that we can get a multi-year program, and the funding stream will go with that. So that's, that's an exciting opportunity. And while we put that package together, I'll be continuing to talk to BLM headquarters to make sure that they are aware that we're interested and we're pursuing so that we can get the support that we need at BLM headquarters. Also pursuing, as, as we mentioned, the funding for Cosgrove Creek is, is, we look at the opportunities there, we're making sure that we've got the pieces in place in terms of the hazard mitigation plan. I know that's now being worked on for renewal. And as I mentioned earlier, we'll be looking closely at a cost-benefit ratio to make sure that we can get something that pencils out so that it'll be competitive to, as we send in an application, assuming that we meet all the criteria. So we've got some time to work on that one, but it's an exciting opportunity for us, and we're pursuing it full bore. And with that, Madam Chair, I'm open to any questions or comments. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. O'Connell, I appreciate it. Are there any questions or comments from the board on this? Mr. Stoppard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. O'Connell, really, thank, thank you for all the work you done. I really appreciate the, the moving forward on the, let's see, go back to it here. When it comes to CARES Act funding, you, you, moving forward with the draft language for direct, for, for, direct to the county for the funding?
Yes.
I really appreciate that, and I think that will be beneficial in the future if it's followed all the way through, through Congress and the Senate.
Yes.
And I really appreciate you stepping up to that, although it wasn't part of our priorities. We all, we all are fluid, and we moved to where, you know, the fire is to put it out, and we appreciate you stepping up to the plate for Calaveras County through all that. Just a couple of quick things.
Sure.
Something that we haven't really discussed before, but falls in line with our priorities, number one and number two, that, that the removal of hazardous trees on BLM land and the federal funds for healthy watersheds and healthy forests. You know, as we all know, this year, millions of acres have burned, burned in California and other states in the West Coast. Personally, I think that the conversation needs to start going towards, how do we start being proactive towards this? How do we work with the National Forest Service and BLM moving forward on doing fuel reduction and be able to plan our forests more strategically and healthily in the future? And I mean, that's an extensive thing, but, you know, I think this conversation needs to be had, and I think they fall in line with our priorities, one and two somewhat, you know? But that's just my personal opinion. I'll leave the rest to the rest of the board to discuss.
Mr. Mills.
Yes, good morning, Ms. O'Connell.
Good morning.
I want to go back to priority number one.
Yes.
Calaveras County has done, I'm not just saying the county, but all of the agencies involved have done a spectacular job of creating the fuel breaks around the communities in our county, the fuel reduction projects that have gone on, the dead trees, et cetera. And it's not just about making those fuel breaks, but maintaining them over the course of the next three to five years and, and going forward. We certainly don't want another creek fire and have it happen, or a Butte fire here in Calaveras. And one of the ways to do that is to maintain what we do and not just simply do something on spur of the moment. To that end, I know that in 2018, Calaveras County with C. Lutz, U.S. Forest Service, Brian Moss, Kathy Galeno, we were working on trying to mirror the Master Stewardship Agreement in Tooluma County. And they have been very successful in getting literally millions of dollars in federal funds for tree projects in that county as a result of it with II Care. I see that, yes, there's two approaches. The, the Good Neighbor is different from the Master Stewardship, but I think that we might want to look at both of them and say, each one has their place, but we need to do something. We cannot just sit here and think about it and talk about it. We've got to move forward with some type of an agreement to make these projects more functional. So I, just a, a point being brought out, we've got the footwork done on the, on the MSA. I think it's just a matter of getting in front of the board and deciding that we want to go that direction.
So it sounds like Mr. Mills, the ball's in our court, then?
Yes, it is.
Since Ms. O'Connell has developed the outline for them?
Yeah, right.
Yeah, you've brought this up before.
So we can, you know, we've, working with Mr. Osborne, who's doing, who's doing a great job for you, put together kind of our best approach. We were looking at, you know, kind of one or the other for the removal of the hazardous trees. I, I don't know if he, you know, wants to get into a broader, you know, maintenance kind of activity. That might be something to consider. So I think, you know, I need to get together with staff and kind of make sure that we're covering all the areas that the board would like us to cover so that we've got the most comprehensive look at forest management.
Fortunately, we do have a Foothill Fire Safe Council that's very active in our county, and I know that we are, we have great cooperation between the federal and, and the, the state programs in establishing fuel breaks or fuel reduction projects across boundaries. That isn't often been the case in the past, but it's working very, very well right now, and I'd just like to be sure that it continues and we don't lose, lose sight of the momentum.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Garmendy.
No, I was going to agree with Supervisor Mills, that we have to keep our momentum and do the maintenance. He and I have gone around on the Master Stewardship Agreement for the last three years, so that's a broader conversation for the board to take up.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Tuffinelli.
Good morning, Ms. O'Connell.
Good morning, how are you?
Is it still morning there? It's not morning there, so, good afternoon.
Thank you.
The Cosgrove Creek project.
Yes.
Yes, and the study done by the Corps and the county back in 2010, I think it was, 2011 during that period, identified, I think, three different projects. The preferred project, though, was not construction of anything other than some enlarging some existing ponds and clearing the creek out completely, all the way down to where it empties into the river. And the questions I have is, the FEMA money, 75% federal and 25% non-federal, have we tried to identify any non-federal monies? I'm assuming state or other monies that we could use? If we could try and identify anything like that to make up the 25%? And then we can?
Right.
We can get together and, and get a cost for that entire project?
Right.
If it would fit within the 50 million? I'm sure it would fit within the 50 million, but the, we, in order to qualify for any of this money, we'd have to put forward a, a project and the costs?
Yes.
To go forward, and they're just not going to give us money because we have something identified by the Corps of Engineers.
Correct, correct. And I actually think, right, we need to spend a little bit of time. The, the good news is the application's not due, I don't believe, until January. And so right now, we're, actually, the formal federal funding announcement has not yet come out. It will come out at the end of this month, so this is in anticipation of that. But you're right, we, we have some groundwork to do. We have to be able to be confident that we've got the local share to contribute. But we have to understand, okay, what is it? What is the solution that we're looking for? Can it pencil out in terms of benefit-cost ratio? That, that tripped us up last time, as you well know. So we've got to look at a solution, and it may be, you know, something a little bit more tailored. I, I noticed in looking at the criteria that they're focused on, kind of more natural solutions to flooding issues. So I, I think we've got to put together a project, and it's, your point is well taken, it's, it's not going to be the core project, but a project that would fit our needs. It may not be $50 million, or maybe, you know, 20 million, I don't know what it's going to be, but something that would create the kind of flood damage reduction that we need for that area and for that community, and do it in a more natural sort of way so that we're not, you know, the costs aren't going through the roof. So, yeah, we've got to identify where we're going to come up with the 25%. I'm assuming that some of that will be state, but I'm sure we've got to figure out some contribution ourselves. But we also need to look at the shape of the project and tailor it around the criteria that FEMA is laying out. So we're at the early stages of that. But the good news is there is something available for us that we can shoot for, and we've got the time enough to shape something that, that should be competitive.
Is there, did they identify the amount of funds? What you put down here is pursue a project for up to 50 million, but was there an amount of funds identified? Did I miss something here? Was that the 3.1?
No, there wasn't an amount of funds, but I don't have that off the top of my head right this second. It was a national pot of money, so there was significant amount of funds. I can get that and get that back to you.
Okay.
So that you know the, the amount of the whole program.
Okay, thank you.
My pleasure, thank you.
Also, colleagues, are there any changes that you want to make to priorities going into the 2021 legislative year? Anything?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Oh, good.
No.
Madam Chair, I was just going to say, and I think, I think Ms. O'Connell is doing this on a regular basis, we have our priorities, but we're also in a very dynamic situation federally with legislation as well as COVID. So I think just emphasizing, keep our proverbial head on a swivel, looking for opportunities as they come, come down the line.
I mean, is there anything that you think should be added?
I have nothing.
To this? Mr. Mills?
No, I don't think there's anything that needs to be added. We've got enough on our plate right here, and.
We're talking about her plate.
Yeah, her plate. I don't think we need to put more on our plate. There's, there's a lot to do, and if we're able to accomplish what we've accomplished and what she has accomplished for us in the last 12 months, let's just keep doing what we're doing.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Tuffinelli?
I would agree, and I trust Mia, knowing her, that if, if something becomes available outside of this that she says she feels will fit this county, she would definitely bring it to our attention.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Stopper?
Just want to say thank you, Ms. O'Connell. We appreciate the job you're doing for us.
Thank you so much. Thank you for the opportunity to do it. It's my honor.
Don't go away yet. Is there any public comment on this? Remember, you can zoom the meeting, and if you have any questions or comments, raise your blue hand or green hand. Oh, green hand. Ms. O'Connell, thank you very, very much for representing us and giving us heads up on things, and if we need a letter, I wrote down for the BRIC program for Cosgrove Creek, I'm sure we'd be happy to do one, or I'll do one.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your support and all of your hands on effort.
Look forward to working with you this year. Okay, on your behalf. Okay, I want to move to item four, a proclamation recognizing National Voter Registration Day, and I'm going to turn the meeting over to Supervisor Tuffinelli.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a proclamation recognizing September 22nd today of 2020 as National Voter Registration Day, and I'd like to ask Rebecca if she has a few words for us.
Good morning. I'm Rebecca Turner, the registrar of voters, and as Gary announced, today is National Voter Registration Day, which makes it a great time to remind voters that if they have changed their name, moved, or are concerned that their signature is outdated, they should update their registration. You can do so online at registertovote.dA.gov, or you can pick up a form at your local post office or library. If you need one mailed to you, you can just give us a call at 754-376. And you can also check your registration status and confirm your mailing address at voterstatus.sos.ca.gov. Ballots are going out for the November 3 election on Monday, October 5, and voters should expect to receive their ballot in the mail by October 9. And new this election will have ballot tracking, so if you go to where'smyballot.sos.ca.gov, you can sign up for ballot tracking and you'll get notifications as to where your ballot is.
Rebecca, I'm glad you brought up the signature thing, because I'm not sure a lot of people understand how you validate the votes when they come into you, and one of the ways you do it is you compare the signature on the ballot to what you have on the registration form. Is that not correct?
That is correct. Every single ballot gets its signature verified, and we keep a record of every time somebody updates their signature, their signature history. So even when people register at DMV, which they're signing on like an e-pad, we have a record of that, plus their prior signatures where they've signed in the past. So we verify every single ballot and the signatures.
So you need to make sure if you've changed some way you signed or your signature compared to what you did if you registered 20 years ago, you need to make sure that it's going to match up to what's on your ballot when you sign your ballot. So, thank you.
Thanks, Gary.
All right, we'll move on to reading the proclamation. Whereas one of the most fundamental and sacred rights of our democracy is the right to vote, in order for our government to function effectively and respond to the needs of our people, citizens must play a role in shaping it. Each year on a National Voter Registration Day, we reaffirm the strong sense of civic duty among our people and encourage friends, family members, and neighbors to get involved by registering to vote. And whereas it is up to each individual man and woman to exercise the right to vote that so many struggle to obtain and protect for them, when we do not take full advantage of the right to vote, we not only give away our voice, we also give away the ability to shape our community's future. And whereas we especially want to recognize that during this election cycle, which is taking place during a national pandemic, health concerns related to COVID-19 are causing extra internal conflict for voters and the need to exercise their right to vote in person at the polls. We want to reassure voters that every precaution will be taken to guarantee they will have access to a safe and sanitized place to catch their ballots for the November 3, 2020 general election. And whereas today, National Voter Registration Day, we recommit to exercising one of the most precious rights we have as Americans and take seriously our responsibility to make our voices heard in the next election cycle. So with that, I'll ask for any comments by the board members?
Madam Chair, I do have a comment. It says sacred rights of our democracy. I'd like to reaffirm that we are a representative republic, not a democracy.
Supervisor Guermandi?
I'd like to thank the clerk's office, and I thank you Supervisor Tuffinelli for bringing this, and I think that, I think we could all agree that integrity and professionalism of our voting in Calaveras, I find to always be exceptional, and I have complete confidence that they always do the right thing and they count every ballot correctly, and just that I have great confidence in the integrity of our elections in this county.
Supervisor Calloway? No? With that, I'll ask for a public comment. No? Okay, with that, I'll call for a motion. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Supervisor Mills, a second by Supervisor Stopper. Call for the vote, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0. Now therefore be it proclaimed, the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors recognizes September 22nd, 2020 as National Voter Registration Day and encourages all citizens to ensure that they are registered to vote. This is passed and adopted by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Calaveras, State of California, this 22nd day of September, 2020. And Rebecca, I will hand this during break to Robin, and you can post it on your wall.
Her screen is frozen.
The screen is... All right.
Well, she's waiting to get unfrozen. I'd like to move to general public comments, if anyone has anything.
Has anything they would like to address to the board that is not on the agenda? Please raise your green hand or come to the podium. Please, go ahead, Ms. McBride.
Terry McRae, Calaveras County Community Committee Chair and Senator of New California State, reading Grievance 22. Every Tuesday, I and the other 55 other counties read our grievances to the State of California as we are in the process of becoming New California State a definite improvement. California State Government violates the following, United States Constitution, Article 4, Section 4, Article 6, the First Amendment, the Eighth Amendment, and the Fourteenth Amendment. Order of the day, convene a special legislative session. While we, the people of the United States of New, I'm sorry, Unified Counties of New California, seek the removal of California State Governor-turned-Dictator Gavin Newsom, and will pursue every means available to remedy his abuse and precipitation of power, we now demand the California State Legislature exercise limited power it has at its discretion to repeal the governor's unlimited powers of authority he is utilizing to destroy the state's economy while furthering his reign of terror upon the United States citizens living in the state of California. Governor Newsom signed an executive order March 4, 2020, known as the Emergency Services Act under Government Code, Section 8625, in response to the COVID-19 pandemic, which has crippled the California economy and destroyed the lives of millions of people in California. As identified by the New California State Movement, California is in default on filing the necessary federal financial forms that will allow the continuation of over 97 billion of annual federal grants. The failure of the state to file the necessary documents the federal government requires has triggered a number of investigations, both by the federal and state government, into the financial accountings of the state and the actions of the governor. The signing of the Emergency Services Act has exacerbated the financial crisis and created a dictatorship that consolidates legislative and judicial branches of government under the office of the governor. California is the first one-man rule dictatorship in United States history. The state is now over $120 billion in debt, with no help in sight of a federal bailout, as means saw by the governor's aunt, House Speaker Nancy Pelosi. According to numerous sources in California State Capitol, there will be a quote-unquote "special legislative session" in the coming weeks to discuss the state's massive financial crisis and repeal the governor's Emergency Services Act. California has 58 sovereign counties, and numerous counties are now abandoning the governor's executive order of March 4, 2020. In a unanimous vote, the Placer County Board of Supervisors decided to no longer recognize Health Emergency Proclamation issued by California Governor Gavin Newsom on March 4, 2020. Since the issuance of the governor's emergency order, the entire state of California has been shut down. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McBride. Okay. Again, just a reminder to the public, you can zoom the meeting. The zooming code is on the agenda of the board, front page, and you will be automatically muted. If you wish to say something, you can raise your green hand. Okay, thank you. I'd like to move to consent agenda. These items are normally routine, non-controversial, will be acted on at one time, one motion, unless any board staff or public would like to pull an item. Any board member want to pull an item?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Item number 16.
Okay, item 16.
And I was going to pull 29, but I see the chiefs here, so I won't.
Does any staff member wish to pull a consent agenda item? Does any member of the public wish to pull an item? May I have a motion on the balance, please?
Madam Chair, I would like to move the balance of the consent agenda.
Okay. A motion by Supervisor Stopper.
I'll second it.
Second by Supervisor Mills, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes on a 5-0 vote of the board. Supervisor Tuffinelli, item 16.
Yeah, do we have Joshua Pack? Is he on?
Yes, I'm on the call.
Hi, Josh. Hey, I have a couple of questions on this. It kind of irritated me a little bit that we, this was put out the bid, and when it was bid on, there was no research done by the bidders to find out any timeframe for this structure, this archplate structure involved in this. And so my questions are, you say here that you had some conversations with the contractor. He did not want to go forward, order the archplate structure, and bill us and continue the contract until the time he can do the construction? Was any of that brought up? I'm afraid what's going to happen, we have a contract right now for $352,000. By the time we go around to next year, it could be $452,000, and then we were on the hook for another $100,000 or whatever. So...
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Well, the first thing I can say to that is we did have those discussions with the contractor. Unfortunately, the action of the culvert is one of the first items as part of the project. We would have to remove the bridge. The bridge would be essentially close that portion of Legan Road, and with the delivery date of early November at the earliest, there's not a lot of work that can be done before that bridge gets placed. And then, I'm sorry, the culvert gets placed, and then once the culvert's replaced, it takes quite some time to do the backfill, do the wing walls necessary, and then reopen the road. We would be way outside our window for our permitting for the stream, and as a result, we need to go to next year's construction window. I agree with you. I have concerns about construction costs. I think one of the things we're going to be looking at in the NRM is potentially purchasing that culvert ahead of time so that we can furnish it to the contractor. It's not a process I really like. I usually like the contractor to furnish that. However, in this case, because of the concerns with the procurement of this, it makes sense for us to procure it ahead of time and then have it on hand and provide it to the contractor. I think that process, combined with the opportunity to potentially advertise it a little bit earlier, I think that will increase our competitiveness of the bid and potentially keep our costs reasonable. But you're absolutely correct. Anytime we exposed to the upcoming season, you're potentially exposed to ebbs and flows of what may or may not occur. And so there are, I would also argue, though, that we have seen a significant increase in construction activity. We have seen prices going up correspondently due to that increased demand. With COVID, we have, and with a potential downturn in the economy, you know, I could make an argument that we could go in the other direction, and we may see more reasonable costs resulting in some less aggressive construction. So I think you make some really good points. We are cognizant of that, and we'll be taking measures in the upcoming year to try and improve the bidability of the project, keep the costs in line with our expectations.
Well, the delivery date for this particular piece that we're talking about, it looks like it's a 90-day window. So just, we need to make sure when we go back out to bid that either, you know, I'm kind of up in the air about us purchasing this piece too and keeping it somewhere until the work is done, or it's needed out there on the project, but we need to make sure that the window fits when we go back out for bid, even if we have to go back out for bid in February and award it in March, and then we have a 90-day window coming to get this thing here, and we're ready to go so it gets completed, because this bridge has been going on for a long time.
Yeah, I agree with you. One of the things we tried to do this year, we recognized that this is the primary access for the adjacent lake. There is a lot of recreational activity here. Impacts of closing the road to the public would be significant and dramatic, and so we did, as part of this, the original intention was to construct this late in the construction season. We were completely caught off-guard and unaware of the procurement issues with the pipe. That's not a traditional issue. From what I've heard from my, from our consulting team, is the tariffs and the trade war currently between the United States and China was a potential factor in this issue. The fact that getting some of this equipment that's coming from there has been impacting that. We've seen similar impacts on cement, for example. And so I agree with you, the original plan was to do it as late as the season to minimize impacts to the public. Unaware of this issue, we do have to recognize next year that this is a project that's been going for more than three years now, and we have to take issues to minimize those risks next year, and I could not agree with you more on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Any questions or comments from the public on this item? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Tuffinelli, did you want to make a motion?
I do, I will move this item, Madam Chair.
Thank you. A motion by Supervisor Tuffinelli. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Stopper, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Passes on a 5-0 vote of the board. Thank you. Like to move to regular agenda, item two. Item 32 on regular agenda, part two. Okay, I love the new rules we have. This is a resolution authorizing changes to position control list for the fiscal budget year 2021. Are there any staff... Are there any staff comments on this item before I ask?
Madam Chair. May I re-accuse myself?
Yes, please. I'm sorry, Supervisor. Thank you. Supervisor Stopper is recusing himself and will be leaving the room.
Let me put on my mask real quick before I walk by.
And turn your machine off.
Okay.
And leave your cash and car keys and Rolex.
My Rolex?
All right. Ms. Hawkins, are you on the line, please?
Yes, I am.
Did you, is there anything you wanted to point out on this before I open it up to board questions or comments?
So, the positions that I have brought forward to you on this position control list are the positions that the board approved during the final budget hearings on September 8th and September 9th.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the board on this item? Mr. Tuffinelli?
Well, on the assessor's office and the vacant senior appraiser, we had some comments, had a good conversation last week on this item. Since that time, I've received several emails, and I'm going to withdraw my support from this item. I will not be voting for this particular reclassification in the appraiser's office.
Mr. Garmendy?
Madam Chair, I too will be withdrawing my support for that.
Madam Chair, can I just clarify that the position that is being reclassed to the assessment standards analyst is the appraiser analyst and not the senior appraiser?
Yeah, just, I'm sorry. The vacant senior appraiser to assessment standards analyst. But I still will not, I won't, I will not support it.
Thank you. Ms. Davis, if you're on the line, is there anything you would like to address on this?
I've been muted. Madam Chair, can you hear me at this point?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay, I seem to have been muted. Without knowing what emails Mr. Tuffinelli or Mr. Garmendy are referring to, there is no way that I can speak to their issues or what may have come up outside of a regular public meeting. However, Ms. Hawkins did comment correctly, the reclassification was originally posted wrong, saying from senior appraiser to assessment standards analyst, when it is actually from appraiser analyst to assessment standards analyst. So the senior appraiser position is not the position being reclassed or requested to be reclassed. And I'm just a little concerned that the board would have problems helping us work toward being more efficient and helping our staff be more proficient with their duties. So certainly, the board has the authority to approve or not approve the request, but I'd really prefer if they would let me know what their issues are.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Mr. Garmendy, Mr. Tuffinelli, is there anything specific you'd want to address on this? Okay. I am going to support it. I too received emails, what have you, and phone call regarding this position. That was also prior to my looking at the details of the position and sending my questions and concerns to Ms. Davis ahead of time and talking to Ms. Hawkins about it. This is a position that's in other assessors' offices. It's not unique to Calaveras. I know, I was trying to differentiate what people were saying to us. I'm assuming we all got the same emails. If the issue was the organization of the department versus the personalities of the department, and in reading the job description, it was very, very thorough. And talking with Ms. Hawkins, and she can expand, this position was vetted, what it was proposed, doing the research outside of Calaveras, the fact that the position is going to be an open recruitment, both within and outside of the county. I felt that there was due diligence that was done on the part of Ms. Hawkins. And though it's well-known that Ms. Davis and I don't agree on things, and I'm not sure I've ever approved of a position she's wanted, I did ask her the question about, I think Mr. Garmendy might have asked, how would this help with the backlog? And she had said that it was hard to be definitive on that. And yet, in reading the details of the job description, what this job is going to be doing is setting up processes, making sure that people are trained, is a liaison to the Board of Equalization, and to establish work procedures that possibly can be improved upon in the assessor's office. We all want the backlog done. A question also I had was of a degree. Did someone need a degree? Well, I can be corrected. Ms. Hawkins or Ms. Davis can correct me. But our chief, our two chiefs do not have degrees. Under the Board of Equalization, only the highest level of appraiser is required to have a degree. So, you know, I felt in fairness to the department, in separating it, how, I usually interest Ms. Davis's requests over the years I've worked with her, that to move forward with the department, Ms. Davis has generally said, you know, I'm the only one that can do something. Again, in reading the details of the job description, in the questions that I had asked Ms. Davis, and in looking at the kinds of things she wants to do within the department to have, I'm not sure reclassification is the word that I'm looking for, but in terms of organizational structure, where there can be growth within the department on the assessment side and on the appraiser side, which does not exist now, I felt that this was a step, and I needed to support that step. Yes, it's unusual for supervisors to get comments or emails from staff. To me, those are issues, those are management issues that Ms. Davis, again, needs to deal with, separate from this position, and is it the right position to have in that department to move the department forward? And for those reasons, I am supporting this position. And I think Ms. Hawkins has done due diligence on the evaluation of the position. So I am going to support it. Mr. Mills?
Yes, Madam Chair, you've provided a good explanation, and I think that we have to look at this not from a, we have to look at it from an organizational perspective, and what does this position do, and what are, what is being done in other counties? Is this a critical, as I referred to it last time we met, we were talking about the keeper of the keys, and that we cannot put ourselves or a particular department in that position. So I will have to concur with you at this point. So I don't know how that would play out in a boat, so to speak, but...
I do.
But there we are, so...
Okay, thank you. So I have to formally, is there any other comments from my colleagues? I would like you, Supervisor Garmendy or Supervisor Tuffinelli, to reconsider what's good for the organization versus the management issues. They're separate issues. Is there any other public comment on this item?
Not at this time. No green house. No green house. Change of the green cones.
Okay. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'll move it.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Is there a second?
Madam Chair, can I make a substitute motion?
Yes, please.
Substitute motion is to accept this item excluding the assessor's office item. So that would include the approval of the Sheriff's Department.
Oh, okay, thank you. I have a motion to approve the position control list with the exception of this position. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Don't you both need to consider a substitute motion?
I am.
Okay.
That's what I'm doing. Yeah, I'm doing the substitute motion, which takes precedent. Yeah.
Okay, so...
She's following Robert's rules.
I understand.
Okay, so I'll second the substitute motion.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes on a 4-0. Supervisor Stopper is recused from this. I'd like to go back to this position. Thank you. Mr. Garmendy? Nothing. Okay. Mr. Mills?
I will again make the motion to approve this position.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second? This position dies for lack of a second. Thank you. I'd like to move to item 33.
Can you look at Supervisor Stopper?
Oh, yeah, Dennis, could you just go out? I don't know, he's probably out in the good-lung-clawed corner.
Madam Chair, he's on his way back in. I let him know you finalized that item.
Okay. Colleagues, did you want to take a break? Okay, we'll take a, we'll take a 10-minute recess. I'd like to move to item 33, a resolution adopting the 2021 county budget. Mr. Alt or Ms. Von Latte, did you want to take us through some of this, please?
Certainly, Madam Chair. So as the board directed at the budget hearings that took place on September 8th and September 9th, we affected those changes. And the budget that is before you today, the updated version of that budget is posted on the county website. It was also attached to the agenda item, and replacement pages are available for anyone who wishes for them.
Oh, Ms. Von Latte, I'm sorry, I made a mistake. This is a public hearing? Isn't, is this a...
No, the public...
No, it's not. Okay, I'm sorry, the next one is. Got it, thank you. 35 and 36 are. Thank you, I'm sorry. Please proceed.
So, so we did affect those changes in this budget. I'm happy to take any questions or dive into greater detail, if that's what the board would prefer.
No, go ahead. Mr. Mills, did you? I can't see.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I'll move it out here.
Thank you.
The questions would be surrounding item number nine. We had a long discussion on the fired JPA and that loan. Are we still, as a board, good with how this is broken down, or is there additional discussion that we need to have on that?
Didn't you try this earlier?
It's not in the budget book, it's actually in the board packet, page 355. No, if we, if we're in the same place that we were with the discussion initially from the, from the 9th, then I'm fine. I just want to be sure that we didn't want to have more discussion on it.
All right, thank you. Any other colleagues?
I have a comment.
Go ahead, Mr. Tuffinelli.
I want to thank Krista for the work she did on this budget and putting it together. And I want to thank you for answering my questions diligently that I had over the course of the week, including this morning, and pointing out exactly where the funds were going and coming from. Good job, and I just want to say thank you.
Thank you very much.
If there's no question or comment, are there any public comments on this item? May I have a motion to spend money? On behalf of the public?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Stopper. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Supervisor Tuffinelli. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes on a 5-0 vote of the board. This is now our budget, not the CAO's and not Ms. Von Latte's. Yes, thank you.
Yeah, but you're chair, so...
Oh.
It's your lot.
It's my budget. It will go well, it is my budget. Oh, no, I forgot. If it doesn't go well, it's my budget. I will be watching. All right, let's move to item 34, a resolution authorizing the purchase of certain capital assets for fiscal year 2021. Ms., I'm sorry, what, Mr. Tuffinelli? Oh.
I said fiscal, not physical.
Fiscal, fiscal. Yes, fiscal. Ms. Rich, did you have anything that you wanted to add that is not in the budget package?
Bunny, your speaker.
No, Madam Chair, I do not.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Rich. Do any members of the board have any questions on this? Mr. Stopper? No? Do any members of the public have any questions on the capital assets for fiscal year 2021? Seeing no public comments, oh, Mr. Mills?
Yeah, I'd like to, just a very quick comment, that in the continuing years going forward, that the boards do recognize the importance of keeping a continual rotation of emergency vehicles within the Sheriff's Department, that that is critical, that we don't fall back into the routine where you have literally hundreds of thousands of miles on emergency vehicles that are questionable in their security with the personnel. So I'm just making a statement at this point, that that isn't, it should be a priority, and I hope it continues.
Well, they also have a lot of vehicles that are parked out back.
Yeah, we know why, too.
Madam Chair, I'll move this item.
Thank you, Supervisor Mills. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second Supervisor Stopper, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Public comment?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Tuffinelli. Go ahead.
Public comment?
I did.
Oh, she did, okay. Aye.
We have four that were right in there and one delayed. So 5-0 vote of the board. We have four that were right in there and one delayed, so 5-0 vote of the board. Thank you. I'd like to move to item 35. This is a public hearing. It's a resolution amending the general plan to add Valley Springs section policies and amendments to the community planning element. Mr. Mauer, did you have anything you wanted to add to this item?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Just a brief overview, this has really been a long process.
Oh, I forgot to open the public hearing.
Pardon?
Just a moment, Mr. Mauer. This is a public hearing and I would like to open the public hearing. Could you please proceed? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I think the staff report is fairly explanatory, I won't need to, I don't, won't go through all the details. There were a couple of changes that we would like to make, one to the resolution. I distributed to each of you a copy of a revised resolution yesterday. The purpose of those changes were to really just make it very clear the action that's being taken by the board if you were to approve this today. So we incorporated the generalized language to the community planning element into the resolution, and then the specific language and specific text for Valley Springs is attachment A. And that, I don't think that was very clear in the original resolution that was included in your packet. There was also a concern about some language in the description of the community itself. This second paragraph of that concludes with a statement that says that State Route 12 also carries local and tourist traffic through town to higher parts of Calaveras County, including the Bear Valley, Mount Reba area. As was pointed out to me, Bear Valley and Mount Reba are actually in Alpine County. I think we could actually just strike that last phrase, starting with including, or we might say other parts of Calaveras County, or if you felt like we wanted to have some specific locations, we could say other parts of Calaveras County, including Calaveras Big Trees State Park and Bear Valley in Alpine County. I think it may be just cleaner just to eliminate that phrase and change higher to other because, you know, traffic goes through Valley Springs, maybe on their way to Angel's Camp or to Malone's Reservoir, and so there's other places than just the higher parts of the county. The Planning Commission spent several hours reviewing this almost line by line and has made a recommendation to you. At this point, if you have any questions, I'm happy to try to answer those.
Okay, Mr. Mills?
So one of these was based on the Toffanelli Committee Plan?
So this goes back to, starting in 2008, where there was a grant filed by, or grant application from Caltrans by the council of governments. A draft plan was created, and then there was a group of citizens working with Supervisor Toffanelli, the first time he was on the board, came up with sort of an alternative draft plan. And these two plans have been merged to some degree, looking at where there were commonalities with the, between the two plans, to try to reach more of a consensus.
Peter, is there a way for the public to see the amended resolution?
Yes, I can, I'll bring that up. Share screen.
I would like to see the phrase that you'd referred to about Bear Valley Stricken. I think it would make it a much cleaner document.
That's actually not in the resolution, that would be on page, hold on. So this is a revised resolution, but that's in the attachment itself.
Yeah, I'm going to it myself. We're somewhere on packet page 403.
370.
Where?
370.
370.
Second paragraph.
Okay. And I appreciate the red line discussion here, too. As long as the public can see that resolution, as amended, I would be in support of it.
So the resolution is on the screen right now. What we did was add, this is the replacement table, and added the actual additional policy, CP 1-4, that reads policies contained as element for each community plan shall apply to those areas within the respective community area boundary as depicted on the land use map. The commission felt that it wasn't really clear, even though I also have understood how this applied, it wasn't clearly articulated in the element itself. So that, those were the changes that were made.
Thank you, Peter. A lot of hard work here, and good to see that it's finally getting, getting done.
Thank you.
Are there any board questions or comments on this? Supervisor Toffanelli?
Yeah, as far as changing the language, you, in your email yesterday, you had higher parts of Calaveras County, including Calaveras Big Trees and Bear Valley and Alpine County. I think I'm in favor of just getting rid of and Bear Valley and Alpine County, and just leaving including Calaveras Big Trees.
State Park.
State Park. And leave it at that. Everything else, I think we've gone over and I don't have a problem with.
Mr. Toffanelli, would you also accept changing the word higher to other?
Say that again?
In that same line, that last line there, that second paragraph. Traffic through town to other parts of Calaveras County, including Calaveras Big Trees State Park.
That'll be fine. That's, that's fine.
Just, just one question, Peter. You know, the total area that is within the Valley Springs Community Plan, do we have a map that we can show where every, everywhere it covers briefly that falls within that?
I don't have a map up that I can share at the moment. Maybe we could go to public comment if there is any, and I can try to bring that up.
I'm fine with that. I'm, I'm just interested to see the total area it represents. I mean, there's one thing here, I, I mean, it's, this is really well drafted. I want to thank the Planning Commission and you for all the work you've done, along with everyone, all the stakeholders over the years coming to this. I mean, I'm completely happy to see this before us. There's just one other thing I would want to talk about a little bit on a natural resources, CPVS 5.1. Limit development on steep hill sides and hilltops to protect natural resources, scenic views that frame the area. I, I would just make a suggestion that encourage limited development on steep hill sides could be the wording, but that's just my perception. I don't know if the rest of the board has appetite for that.
Could you repeat the, which?
Natural resources, CPVS 5.1.
5.1, okay.
Could you tell us what page you're on?
Yeah, packet page 373.
You want to change it to encourage?
Encourage limited development, yeah.
And that would go along also with packet page 396.
I'm, I'm fine with that.
It's minor, but you know, there's certain areas that are buildable that aren't necessarily natural resource areas, you know, so encouraging gives us the opportunity to vet it properly.
I could support that.
Valley Hills Estates Unit Number 1, along the backside of the hill, if you're going down 26, they're all built.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Stopper, did you have any others?
No, those are the two things. I just would like to see the community plan boundaries, where they fall.
Okay.
Just curious, it's always been a question of mine.
Let me go to public comments. Are there any public comments on this item? Ms. Glenn Bell. Mr. Mauer, did you find something that we could put on the screen regarding?
Yes, I will do that now.
Thank you.
Mr. Mauer, just a point. I don't see that picture as being Calaveras County, do you? Behind you?
No, that's not.
Just a point.
Just a little escape from my office. So this is the general plan land use map, and I don't know if you can see, but the red boundary here, do you see my cursor? Basically comes around the existing development areas identified for future development within the community boundary. That's where these policies would apply.
Thank, thank you very much, I appreciate that, Peter.
And as you recall Supervisor Stopper, the Rancho Calaveras community plan policies were adopted with the general plan, so there was a separate set of policies that apply to Rancho.
There is some District 5 in it, though, just a small strip.
Yeah, small strip through La Cintena and also over there towards Hogan, Hogan Dam.
Correct, and, and over on the other side of 26, off Visada Lago.
Yes.
Yes.
Good, good work, Peter, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
And to your staff. I know you didn't do it alone.
Nothing. All right, I want to close the public hearing, bringing it back to the board for action. Mr. Toffanelli, you've been involved in this for a long time, would you like the pleasure?
I would, thank you, Madam Chair, and Peter and your staff, thank you so much for all the hard work over the many years, putting this together on and off, and, and yes, it's no, and to get to this point, I'm sure it's one thing that you'd like to close the book on, so.
Yes, and moving on to the next one.
So with that, I would make the motion, Madam Chair.
Motion by Supervisor Toffanelli, is there a second, please?
I would like to second it, Madam Chair.
A second by?
Just for the record, that's, that's with the revised resolution.
As amended, yes?
As amended, yes, correct, as we discussed, absolutely.
That's because Big Trees State Park's in it? I'll support it. A motion by Supervisor Toffanelli and a second by Supervisor Stopper. All in favor?
Aye.
A opposed? Passes on a 5-0 vote of the board. Thank you, Mr. Mauer.
Thank you.
I'd like to move to item 36. Again, this is also a public hearing to introduce and waive the first reading of the ordinance for chapter 15.12 Unlimited Density Owner Built Rural Developments and authorize a summary publication of the ordinance. Mr. Oliver, are you with us, please?
Yes, Madam Chair, can you hear me?
Yes. Try again, a little bit louder.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you, Mr. Stopper, yes, we can hear you.
Very good, let me see if I can get my screen to work just a moment.
Wait, Doug, I forgot again. This is a public hearing, I announced that, but I forgot to open it. Open the public hearing. Mr. Oliver, please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Doug Oliver, Chief Building Official. Barring any technical difficulties, I should be able to pull up a couple of things on your screen here, relevant to 1512, owner-built limited density rural dwelling ordinance. Last month, I brought this to your board in a study session to get some advice on a couple of changes that were necessary, and I have brought those back for discussion. There we are, let's see, can you see that now?
Yes.
Okay, so to, to take a step back for just a moment, discuss this for the folks at home who didn't see it last time. The limited density owner-built rural dwellings is a component of state law that allows the local jurisdictions who have ag or rural components to adopt this ordinance, allowing owners who intend to live in the structure to set aside the, some of the stricter components of the code and essentially use the technical codes as a basis for approval. This allows alternate materials, green building products, all kinds of things that wouldn't necessarily be codified in the code and the original intent, going all the way back to when Governor Brown was governor the first time. This was placed in state law to allow for experimentation in new products and allow a greater degree of flexibility for the individual who takes a personal responsibility and to live in the conditions. This ordinance in no way is designed to be used for rentals, for Airbnbs, for employee housing, anything where an individual is essentially in control of another person's living conditions. In addition to that, I do want to point out that in no way does this ordinance make a building substandard. The, the components within this ordinance that we had talked about last time, and I can, I can bring them up again if there's any other questions, but make it very clear that in no way can this be substandard pursuant to 17920.3 of the California Health and Safety Code, which is a list of components that if you fall in this category, your building is unsafe, which includes structural deterioration, unsanitary conditions, lack of hot water, lack of available heat. There's a, there's a lot of, there's a laundry list of things that if we catch these items, the building is unsafe, and those are things that we cannot allow in any case for a building that applies for a permit under this standard. I'm, I'm actually pretty excited to bring this forward and get this done, because it's something that's been in my queue of things to do in my career for about 10 years, especially when the housing crisis got fired up. In my previous working environment, there was a discussion amongst the Building Officials Association of California about how we were going to, you know, find creative ways to reduce the impact of the housing crisis in California, and this was one of them that was talked about at length. I did not have the opportunity in, in my previous employment to move it forward, so I'm, I'm very happy to be able to do this for this community. Getting, getting right into the meat of the ordinance, one of the changes discussed by your board with staff was what, what we were going to classify as rural, and it was discussed about how, how we could limit it so it does not impact specific communities or specific areas of development in a negative fashion. There was a couple of different ideas batted around. One idea was discussed to limit it to anything outside of an HOA. There was discussion about community areas, there was, there was a handful of different things that were discussed after talking with county council and, and the planning department. Between Peter, Julie and I, we, we landed upon the most reasonable of the options in our mind, and that was the language here in, this is section 1512040E, item 1. The added language beyond the zoning restrictions that we, we had already discussed was the language outside of community areas as identified on the land use map, figure LU1 of the Calaveras County General Plan. I'm going to try and bring that up for view. that up for review. Okay, can you see that now? Okay. So, what we have on this plan, the areas that are the community plans are bordered in red. So, as you can see, in the Valley Springs area, we've got a pretty large community plan that identifies a huge swath of subdivision area that is inside the community plan, similar to further up the Highway 4 corridor. We have Dorrington area, we have Murphy's area. We have several community areas that include several subdivisions, and those would be excluded from being able to participate in this ordinance. When looking at the component or the question about should we restrict it away from HOAs, several concerns arose, not the least of which is that an HOA is a separate entity that governs similar to a corporation. They have their own enforcement, their own governing board, their own ability to restrict what's in their part, their subdivisions, and the sentiment was that, you know, without proper findings, and I think if we run aground on this, we can discuss it further with Julie, who's waiting in the wings, but the overall sentiment was that by restricting it from HOAs, one, we are not giving them the opportunity to express their own desires for their construction methodologies they want to see in their HOAs, and that could be a positive and a negative. They could decide, an HOA could form, or an HOA that's present could decide, we want to encourage certain types of construction that does not conform to the building code. I want a 10-unit subdivision that's nothing but cob houses. It's all dirt and plaster. That would be prohibited under this ordinance if we chose to exclude HOAs. So, in looking at that, we also discovered that, you know, on the off chance that there is an HOA out there that is no longer functioning, and I'm aware, in previous experiences, I'm aware of subdivisions that had HOAs. The HOAs are on the books, but the board dissolved without dissolving the HOA, and so it's on paper, but nobody knows it exists. And after, you know, 20 years of turnover in housing, there's only a few people in that subdivision that would remember there was an HOA, and the county wouldn't, you know, be aware because we don't have a GIS layer specifically for HOAs. So, what may actually happen is someone would apply for a permit under this standard, get their home half-built, and a neighbor who disagrees with the look could bring this out from the depths and say, hey, there's actually an HOA here. You can't build that, and that would not look good for the county. The only way to track every one of these HOAs is to go through a process of reviewing records, reaching out to the public, creating a GIS layer, and plugging every single HOA we could possibly find into that layer in order to make sure that we didn't miss anything so that there wouldn't be any situations arise like that, and the cost would be prohibitive. So, that's why we limited it to where it is at with just outside of the community areas. Let me go back to the ordinance markups here. So, moving through other changes that had been made at the board's request. Under building permits required, the board expressed a desire to make sure that there was an indemnification agreement signed, holding the county harmless. That language was included in 1512080. Specifically, prior to receiving a permit under this chapter, the parcel owner, or owners, shall enter into the county's standard indemnification agreement, holding the county harmless from legal challenges based on the issuance of the permit. This additional step, this is an item that we would collect and retain on record for the life of that structure as a rural dwelling, sheltering the county from litigation. Okay, and moving on. We did make some changes to the findings at the end. Per the discussion, this is under Section 3 Findings, our discussion with the board, there was a little misunderstanding about what this ordinance was going to apply to, whether it was going to be just lots impacted by the Butte Fire, or whether it was going to be for everyone. Previous discussions of the board was that they wished to have something for the Butte Fire recovery. Between Peter and I, we're reiterating that we would prefer that this be available to everyone, not just the folks in the Butte Fire area. So, we did modify Items 3 and 4 to remove the language impacted by the Butte Fire so that it is essentially within the unincorporated areas of Calaveras County, subject to the restrictions we previously talked about. In addition, we added Section, or Finding 5. There is a shortage of affordable housing in Calaveras County, and the adoption of this ordinance will help residents in rural low-density areas more affordably adapt their existing properties to create additional housing for family members. Once again, this is for family. This is for the owners and the owner's family, and if at any time that it is used contrary to that, that is either a code violation or they are in the process of converting it back into a dwelling that complies with the current building codes. Those are the primary changes. I will make a, I do want to bring up that I intended to bring this back to your board on the 13th of October, but the public, unfortunately, I have to push that to the 27th, so my publication that is part of this board packet would have to have the date changed if your board approves this to move forward. Is there any questions?
Are there any questions of Mr. Mills?
Yes, Doug, I know we've had some conversations, and I have sat in on the industry work group a couple times while this was being discussed. I think on the HOA matter, one of the quick ways to do this is if the HOA is recorded against the title, you're covered. You know that it's there. If it's not recorded on the title, then we don't need to worry about it. Would that make sense?
Yeah, I suppose that would make sense, which raises the question, if it's recorded on the title, but the HOA is defunct, do they have a say, or can they remove it from title? In addition to that, though, going back to the enforcement rights of the HOA, I would still say that I would prefer, you know, pursuant to my direction or my view for the building department and how we manage building codes that your board roundly approved of at my appointment, giving the homeowners the right to choose, and in this case, the HOA the right to choose, in my opinion, is the most proper way to go in this respect. We did, however, agree that in community areas, the community areas are essentially there to safeguard the look and feel of that community, the atmosphere, whatever you want to say about that. Their specific feel of each community needed to be safeguarded in those areas, which is why those community areas were created essentially, and I felt that it was completely appropriate to, you know, add to that safeguard. In the greater community, however, where it's not going to negatively impact those community areas, it seemed more appropriate not to restrict the HOAs and give them the opportunity to decide for themselves if they want this, or they want any component of this in their community.
Can I butt in here just a minute? What if we introduced a language to state, if within an HOA, must have proof of HOA acceptance for permit approval? That way, you're giving the HOA the ability to say yea or nay, and so if it's within an HOA, you've got to have proof of acceptance or approval?
I would say that that actually opens the door to a great deal more coordination at a level that generally isn't accomplished between building departments and HOAs because essentially CCNRs, covenants, and restrictions, they aren't enforceable by a building department, unless specifically in, you know, codified in ordinance. If we begin to enforce CCNRs, there's, we open the door for all sorts of other CCNRs that we would be having to enforce because if we're, you know, I guess the, if we miss that, we become responsible for enforcing something that is a civil agreement between an HOA and its parcel owners. So, I don't, I would caution against doing that for fear of opening up a bigger door here that crosses the line between administrative codes and civil agreements.
Doug, additionally to this point is that some districts have certain things within their responsibilities as well that may play into this.
Is it fire district?
I'm thinking road districts and things like that.
Well, I would hope not, considering we are limiting it to the interior of the parcel, and we are requiring 4290, 4291, so minimum standards for fire access and road and driveway maintenance are codified. So, there shouldn't be a big difference there that I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you.
Julie, can you weigh in on what Mr. Oliver said about?
Yes. I mean, the county, I think this has come up, the issue of the extent to which the building department helps enforce HOA CCNRs, and the county has long taken the position that because the HOAs are sort of a private overlay, that we would need to make a public benefit finding before we could expend county resources to help them enforce their CCNRs. And so, I do agree with Mr. Oliver that it does kind of open a door because there's nothing in the state law regarding this particular limited density rural ordinance. The regulations governing the ordinance don't distinguish between parcels that the county should consider as potentially applicable based on whether or not there is a private regulatory overlay. So, it would be something we're doing on our own, and I don't think we'd have the authority to do it unless we were able to articulate a public benefit finding.
Well, given the map that was shown up there previously of the community areas, there are HOAs within those areas that you are doing just that.
Well, so the county.
What you're talking about, you're charging the HOA, you're eliminating it, and Rancho has HOA, and other areas that you show up there in Copper and up the hill, those all have HOAs, and you're excluding them from this. So, you're already doing that. So, I, go ahead.
The reason they're excluded, the basis for the exclusion on the map was the fact that they were part of a planning area that would not be appropriate to deem rural low-density. So, the county has to determine what counts as rural low-density, and the regulations say they require the county to consider in the definition things like geography, topography, density, things like that, and other kind of uniform planning designations, zoning designations and what have you. And because the community areas have already been designated as aesthetically protected, so to speak, and, you know, the words, as Mr. Oliver said, the purpose for excluding them is not because there may or may not be an HOA. The purpose is because aesthetic design in those areas is something that warrants greater protection because of their historic value. And so, the question, so I guess what I'm trying to say is the board does have flexibility in terms of defining what counts as a rural low-density area. The board has discretion there, but I don't, the types of factors that the state is suggesting the board look at when defining that term doesn't have anything to do with whether there are private contractual obligations that are in the area. So, yes, there might be areas that we exclude from this that happen to have subdivisions in them, but the concern I have is the existence of the subdivision being the basis for deciding whether it's rural and low-density, if that makes sense.
It's an HOA, it's an HOA, you're excluding it. I understand what you're saying, but I don't agree completely with what you're saying. Every one of the subdivisions that are outside of those areas that were shown on the map went through planning, so they're planned. They've been planned. They're registered with the State of California subdivisions, so they already are recognized as such. You're making, you're going to make a lot of lawsuits here for HOAs to defend theirselves, and their own CCNRs based simply by what we're doing here on this. I don't disagree with what the ordinance is trying to do, but I disagree with how it's going about and what it's going to create, especially in the rural areas, some of the rural areas that are already subdivided and have HOAs and are recorded and went through that whole process to get to where they're at. It's going to create a lot of problems, I see. I've already had comments about some of what's going to happen. So, I can't agree with what's written here unless the verbiage somehow eliminates these from planned HOAs that are registered with the state and went through the proper process to get where they're at.
Okay, are there any other? Mr. Oliver, is there anything else you'd like to proceed talking about?
That is essentially it. Should your board concurrent vote this forward, we'll be scheduling it for the 27th of October.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions? Mr. Stoffer?
I do have to say that, you know, consistently, the HOA things come up through multiple types of uses, not this, and it's come to this very, very same conclusion that we as a county do not enforce the CCNRs. I do agree with, I understand where Mr. Toffanelli is coming from, and I don't disagree with him, but I do agree with the interpretation presented to us by Ms. Lewis to that issue. They, the, I think that this is our best tool leverage to what they provided here to be able to follow through on. Yes, Rancho has an HOA, but it also is, has a community plan that's instated into the general plan, which is the tool that's being used right here. You know, at the point where there will be HOAs that will want to allow this, and there will be certain HOAs that won't want to allow this, and I think that the only thing I can probably say is a minimum acre parcel size is the only other step because, you know, I don't want to necessarily pick and choose different HOAs that are outside my district, but like Circle 20 has 20-acre parcel sizes. This might work for them if they decide it works for them. Maybe they don't want it. They can state it with their own CCNRs, and at that point, yes, it will create more litigation or court expenses, but that's the decision of that HOA, not the county. or court expenses, but that's the decision of that HOA, not the county. Go ahead, Mr. Toffenelli.
But you're forcing them to do that. This will force them to do that. If somebody wants to build, they're gonna go to county and get a permit and the county's not gonna enforce any HOA, CCNRs. They're gonna come with their permit to start building a house that's not in conformance and yes, you have a special plan around you, but you have an HOA that has the size of houses and what they can and can't do, not the special plan. Special plans addresses a bunch of other different things, but you're gonna force them to do that. That's my point. You're going, it's forcing them to do that. Every time somebody wants to go in and get a permit and build a house that's not in conformance with the CCNRs, you're forcing them to go to court. Otherwise, right now, they're not.
I don't see the proper tools in place to be able to address that in the way that you're stating though. I mean, you know, I understand the issue and I, you know, but all in all, this ordinance, I see it as a tool to be able to provide a few people that will be using it. You know, if it comes down to something that's close to a yurt, you're never gonna get insurance on something like that. You know, I think there's very few people that'll utilize it to this degree. And it'll give them, you know, honestly, I think this gives people the opportunity to live happily on their property the way they want. So, I mean, and I don't, you know, I see where you're coming from, Toffenelli. I'm not here to argue with you. I do agree with you to a certain extent. I just, I agree with Ms. Lewis's and Mr. Oliver's, I said it earlier, interpretation of how the law applies and how this is a real hurdle and a gap that is hard to bridge. And maybe someday when somebody comes up with that solution, we should apply it to a lot of other things, not just this ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Stopper. Mr. Mills?
Yeah, let me continue that discussion because I did have it privately, talking about yurts. When you think about it from a fire perspective, you know, people that have yurts are just gonna have to face the reality. If a fire rolls through there, there's not gonna be a yurt there anymore. That's just what's gonna happen. So they've got to understand that. Secondly, if you're talking about bar circle and diamond 20s, they don't have CCNRs, they don't have HOAs, but they are filed with the Department of Real Estate to indicate that they are rural residential parcels, you know, for that specific purpose. So that's kind of the question I think that is being bandied around a little bit here is about what is rural residential in those Department of Real Estate filed subdivisions and how does that relate to, because those property owners, in essence, from your perspective, Mr. Toffenelli, bought in their understanding that their purpose was to protect not only their standing within that subdivision, but the financial standing of that parcel and should something else other than that happen, is that going to financially affect their ability, their resale ability or anything else that happens? So that's really where this, I think you're trying to go. I'm not putting words in your mouth, but I think you're trying to use that analogy. And I, to some degree, agree that those Department of Real Estate filed subdivisions have a specific purpose in state code and, you know, how are we making that fit within Title 25? I just, that's kind of an open-ended question. Or do we segregate out and say, if you're in a Department of Real Estate filed subdivision map, you know, where do you go with it? So I can see that conversation continuing from the look on your face.
It's a complicated one and I think we're all, we're all, we all have that understanding. There's one other thing I did wanna bring up is we got, I believe, a three-year wait to be able to sell and rent or rent out this. I think there's good reason. The state requires one year. We can always go stricter. I just, you know, is three years what we want? Do we want more? Do we want less? Or do we wanna stick with three years? You know, I think there's the opportunity here for it to provide more affordable housing. If someone can rent out something that's legitimate in a certain amount of time, that could be a positive end, but at the same time, someone monopolizing on this and starting to build substandard homes could be a problem. I think that's why we put in the three years for sale also. So I mean, that's, there's two edges to that blade. I just thought we should discuss that a little bit.
Strangely enough, there's already media advertising in our local communities over Title 25. So, pardon me, media. In other words, people are advertising Title 25 homes.
In our community?
In our communities, which is kind of weird. But I would agree with the three years. I think that there needs to be a little skin in the game, so to speak. And if you give them only a one-year number, there's a lot of people that are gonna do bump and runs. They're just gonna build, move on, build, move on, build, move on. And I don't think that should be the purpose here. This, you know, if somebody can, if all they can afford is to live in almost a grass shack and that's all they can afford, but that gives them the ability to live in a grass shack, that's, that's a risk they take. But they have to be able to hang in there. And that's where that three years, I think, comes in. It makes, it makes them have a little more skin in the game.
I would agree with that end of it. I was thinking of possible rentals more so on that end, you know, on the other side of the blade. But, you know, then we're possibly putting someone in a position to build a whole bunch of substandard structures for people to run out for who knows how much. So, yeah, I take, your points, we'll take in, Mr. Mills.
Okay, Mr. Guaramendi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Supervisor Toffenelli, you have a good point. I don't, on here, I don't, I don't have a solution. It's a tough one. So I'm gonna support where the staff wants to go, recognizing that it's not perfect, but it's something. I'll support the three years because, like Supervisor Stopper, I get it, but if you're gonna build a rental housing, you should build it to code. And Dennis is correct too, you don't want the bump and run. So I'm good with that as this stands.
Okay, thank you. I'll be bringing it back to the board for final comments and any action. Is there any public comment on this item?
Good morning, Terry.
Good morning, you guys.
You don't have to wear your mask right there.
I'm gonna bring it up here so the cameras can all see that I wore my mask up to the podium. But no, I wanna, I wanna thank you guys. I'm Terry Weatherby, Structural Engineer Office in Jackson. I'm the only structural engineer in five counties. I added Mariposa recently because there's no structural engineers there. And I always call myself the self-proclaimed Mayor of Oak Hill. If you ever have anything about Oak Hill, you can call me. And I'm here mainly as an apology to Supervisor Toffenelli. He called me about this a couple weeks ago. I changed cell phones and I lost your number. I lost your number. I lost your number. Anyway, so I'm slowly getting back to that. We started working on this 10 or 12 years ago. Chief Inspector Oliver was over in Topeka County then and we were working with a couple of, well, and then when Ed came in, we were really, really pushing on it. And when Doug came in, it's just a perfect marriage. What you're seeing here is a culmination of his efforts. All we did was review it back and forth. I work in a number of counties. Amador County has used this for two or three years to great success. We talked a little bit. There's concerns about plumbing. There's concerns about electrical and structural stability. All of those are taken care of in the normal process. Basically, what this does, in a nutshell, is it gets rid of fire sprinklers for a little while, which most of us agree, fire sprinklers out in a rural area inside a house don't really make sense. Maybe we should have ordinance to put them outside the house where the flames that come down, that's a discussion for another time. So it gets rid of that. And as you know, January 1st, in order to get your energy cals to work, which we'll get to in just a second, you need solar. So this kind of defers the solar package that would be mandated on most single-family homes nowadays. And then we get to the energy cals. As you guys know, California's heading towards a zero, zero net or something like that, zero net loss, and that's coming up 2024, around there. And this kind of puts some of that off on these houses so that you can actually build something. The last energy change that we had January 1st was insane, the amount of stuff we have to do with the insulation and the efficiencies. And the state passes these laws to make things better. They did it 12 years ago with the fire code, the WUI stuff that we fight. And there was no solutions for the EVB. There was no solutions. There are now and some of them are even cost-effective. Fire sprinklers, when they came out with that, it was 15,000 a house, you know, eight years ago. Now it's down mostly below 10, down around seven or eight, depending on who you get. So the state keeps coming up with these bureaucratic stuff that makes it harder and harder for us to build. This ordinance that we've been fighting for allows, you know, Joe Guy to come up from the valley and build a house on property up here that he's comfortable in. And he has an asterisk by his name. He's gonna be here at least three years. We had a long discussion about that at the industry meeting and I think three's a good term. You know, a lot of people push for five, a lot of people push for five, but I think three's a good number. I think Doug Oliver should be commended for the job that he's done with this and we've been real happy with him here in Calaveras County. You guys, he's doing a super job. So thank you very much for your time. If you guys ever have any questions, you can call me anytime and ask me any code questions or anything. I'll be glad to help.
After he gives you his new phone number.
Yeah, exactly.
Do you have the same phone number, Terry?
I do, yeah.
Okay. I'll call you, text you, then you-
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Weatherby. Are there any other public comments on this showing? Okay, seeing no other public comments, I will close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for further discussion and action. I hear there's two items that Mr. Toffenelli and Mr. Stopper brought up that I think we just need to clarify before we take the vote. Mr. Toffenelli would like the part on HOAs changed. Is there support for that? Okay, seeing no support, there will be no change on that section. Mr. Stopper brought up the three years.
Withdrawn.
Withdrawn. But if anybody else would like to discuss it, they can, seeing, oh, Mr. Toffenelli, did you want to discuss the three years?
No, I just wanna make a comment before we call for a vote and a motion. It's not that I don't agree with this ordinance and how it's written and what it's trying to do. I agree with that completely. I disagree with how we can't, what we're forced, gonna be forcing onto HOAs and what the outcome of that can be. So with that, I can't support it.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you. So there's really two items. One is to introduce and waive the first reading. The second one is to authorize a summary publication, but to modify the date from the 13th of October to the 27th of October. Do I have that correct, Mr. Oliver?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. So seeing there might be a change in the vote, I'll take the first item to introduce and waive the first reading of the ordinance for 15.12 of the county code. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I would like to move to introduce and waive the first reading of ordinance chapter 15.12, limited density owner-built rural dwellings of the Calaveras County Code.
Thank you, Mr. Stopper. Is there a second?
Madam Chair, I would like to second that motion.
Second by Supervisor Guaramendi. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Passes on a 4-1 in the negative Supervisor Toffenelli. I'd like to bring the second part of that, which is authorize a summary publication of the ordinance as modified from October 13 to October 27. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to move to authorize a summary publication of the ordinance.
As modified.
As modified.
Thank you. Motion by Supervisor Stopper, second by Supervisor Guaramendi. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Passes on a 4-1 Supervisor Toffenelli in opposition. Okay, thank you. I'd like to move to supervisor announcements. Mr. Mills, you always have something for us.
I do. I had an opportunity to sit on a, basically an update call with DWR, State Water Quality, CSAC, and RCRC over the eastern San Joaquin or all of the basins. There are 515 basins that are in California, of which 94 are high and medium and 21 in critical overdraft. We're one of the 21. And that being said, that I know that CCWD is on the agenda for sometime in late October to come back and talk to this board about what is going on and what are the plans and how would we implement our portion of it. We don't have an option. If we don't implement, the state's gonna take over and we don't wanna have that option. So I think that the conversation's been ongoing. It's a good conversation and I look forward to what CCWD is able to tell us and also what I can add at that time. Secondly, I would like to know whether or not the board would be interested in leveling the playing field regarding fire safety. We have a number of Airbnbs, short-term vacation rentals, et cetera, but there's been no activity up till recently about discussing, and there's an interest now, about discussing the possibility of fire inspections on those locations. It's questionable, I think, at times of what an Airbnb or what they would be doing and whether or not they are complying. Your hotels and motels have to go through it and I think that it would just be something I would be asking the board whether they would be interested in having Doug and the rest of the group look at fire safety inspections for Airbnbs and short-term vacation rentals in the Copper, Uplands area.
Except if it applies to Copper. Wouldn't it apply to the county? Or do you want it just specific to one of your subdivisions?
Well, the subdivisions would be the short-term vacation rentals as listed in the Title 12, but I'm looking also at Airbnbs and what their impact would be.
So why not have your fire district have an ordinance that applies just to the areas within their jurisdiction?
There are fire districts, as we heard Consolidated today, talk about, you know, creating that, which they will do, but not every fire district has the capacity. And for that reason, there are sections of the county that are left wide open. Right now, EBSS pass and Consolidated is the only ones that really are capable of doing it. I know the Copper and Murphys will be looking at it, but that leaves a whole other area of the county that is gonna be left in, basically our hands are controlled in the short term until the rest of them pick up the ball and have a fire marshal that actually can do the inspections.
I'm not sure where the board is on this. Do you wanna have the board, have the staff look at this item, Mr. Guaramendi?
I think you've got a very good recommendation regarding having the fire departments do that. It's hard enough for businesses and individuals these days. I don't feel like putting more burden on them.
Okay. Mr. Stopper, did you have anything you wanted to say?
I think you did have some good points, Supervisor Callaway. I think right now, our staff's burden with quite a bit. It may be something we may wanna look into in the future, but right now it's not on the top of our priority list.
Thank you. Mr. Toffenelli, did you have?
How many are we talking about? Do we have any numbers? How do you know where they're at? Where would you go locate? You go Airbnb and get the number from them and the locations of them? And how many there are? If you wanna bring back at our next meeting some more information on those numbers and what we're talking about, then, you know, I might be interested in hearing about it. It may not be a whole lot of work. It may be a tremendous amount of work. I don't know, but I'd like to hear some numbers on it.
Thank you. I was giving a preliminary here and if there is interest from the board, I will get the information. You need to properly make a decision.
Mr. Mills, I really, I don't support that. It's just one more thing we'll be asking staff to do. We don't have the staff to do the inspections and I feel if the fire districts wanna do it sooner than, or they have a need, they feel that there's a need in their respective fire districts, I'd let them put together their own ordinance to do that.
Appreciate the discussion. That's all I have.
No, thank you very much. Any other comments, Mr. Toffenelli? Did you have any? Mr. Stopper?
We'll be having our fish and walk-
We'll be having our Fish and Wildlife Committee meeting tomorrow. We will have, you know, it'll be something real interesting. I invite the supervisors to attend. You know, we won't be discussing specifically, but we'll have a representative from Fish and Wildlife that's actually doing the study on the mountain lions, and, you know, some ranchers on hand, and, you know, it's good to get both perspectives. There was a lot of good information shared last time. Some of it is emotional, but, you know, it was, it was, it was, it's good stuff, actually. I think it's going to be a good meeting. I invite everyone to attend.
When is that meeting?
Tomorrow, tomorrow at 5:30, I believe.
Here?
It'll be on Zoom, so you don't even have to come here. So if you all want, I can forward you all the Zoom link and everything, if that's all right, if I'm within my bounds.
Sure, it's a public meeting.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And then CMCAA meeting last week went well, nothing to report.
What's CMCAA?
Calaveras-Mariposa Community Action Agency.
Got it.
Deals with many of the things when it, you know what it deals with.
I know. I just didn't, I can't remember the wall. Thank you.
It's a good thing I didn't stutter and bring the A up to four of them, so I wouldn't know what to put into those places.
Mr. Guaramendi, did you have anything?
No, ma'am.
Okay. In 1997, Supervisor Tryon and I did the grape stomp. I think that was our second time. I was the mucker, he was the stomper. I think we came in second to the end, the last, but on this Sunday, I will be also doing the virtual grape stomp, and again, I think I'm the mucker. So I think it's televised. I'm not sure how, through the Calaveras Wine Grape Alliance. So if you all would like to cheer me on, my heat's at about three. I'd appreciate the support.
Well, Marie, one time you and I saw the log together.
Yeah, we did. That's right. Gary and I were Jack and Jill on the logging jamboree. Yeah, that was fun.
It would've been kind of nice to do a virtual logging jamboree this year.
Oh, yeah, that's, yeah, you're right. Ms. Glanville, do you have anything?
I just have the question.
Okay. Mr. Al, Ms. Edwards, I'll get to you in a minute, but I have something else. Susan, you have something you would like to share with us, please?
I wanted to let everybody know that the Mark Twain was not able to have their health fair this year due to the coronavirus, but you can get a blood test anyway for $45, and if I could just bring this. There we go. Let me give you the phone number. It is 209-897-0003. If you call from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., you can get an appointment to go get your $45 blood draw. Thank you.
Thank you. That's always been a tradition with me. I've always gone to the Mark Twain Health Fair. I think it is absolutely the best bet in all of Calaveras County. I usually get there about 6:30 in the morning, and sort of the same people, and I have my appointment for October 1st, and I would encourage all of you to do it also after you get your COVID-19 test at the fairground. Mr. Al, do you have anything?
I do not, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Ms. Edwards?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards. Seeing no further comments, this, did I forget? Oh, yes. Oh, I forgot. We have a closed session. Okay, this meeting is, we are adjourning into closed session, and could you please read it, Ms. Glanville?
Item number 37 on the closed session agenda pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6, conference with county-designated labor negotiator Judy Hawkins regarding employee organizations SEIU and Sheriff's Management Unit.
Thank you. And who will be in charge?
Do you like to start or comment?
Oh, God, I forgot. I did really well today. Is there any public comment on this item? Thank you, Ms. Glanville. We'll take a two-minute recess, so you can leave and we can talk. Thank you.